All right, we're good.
Okay, thanks, Jayden. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the, the May 25th Board of Review. Christie, could we have a roll call, please, and I'll turn it over to you?
Yes, Beerstead.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
You, Miller.
Here.
Odean. Plunkett.
Here.
Thank you. The purpose of this meeting is to adjourn the Board of Review until Thursday, September 23rd at 4:00 P.M. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Here, I'm trying to, I'm trying to unmute.
I will take a motion to adjourn until that time.
I make a motion to adjourn until Thursday, September 23rd at 4:00 P.M.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. I'll take a roll call on the motion. We'll start with other person, Plunkett.
Aye.
Odean. Odean.
Aye.
There you go.
Carol.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye, I can't, I can't.
More set.
My connectivity is for shit. I'm trying to, I'm trying to find a place where I get any at all.
Downing.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Thank you. With all in favor, we will adjourn the Board of Review until September 23rd at 4:00 P.M. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christie, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, so everybody's got about 10, 12 minutes here, so the council meeting starts.
Don't disconnect though, we're just gonna continue with this, with this meeting.
Right, so they can mute and, you know, shut off their video if you want, but don't disconnect. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
John or Jayden, just test my, I'm just testing my audio.
Yep, I got you, you're good.
All right, I'll be back in a few.
Thank you.
Good evening. Colin User 3, are you Troy Smith?
Um, phone number 6122325, is this Troy Smith?
No. Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, we're just trying to get organized for the liquor license renewals, so we just wanted to make sure that was you. So we'll, we'll come back to you in a little bit, Troy, thank you.
Yep.
Right, so by new, yep.
All right, it is 6:31, we are ready to go, whenever.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like we're live and ready to go when you are.
Yeah, we're all ready to go. Dan, are you able to hear us, sir?
John, John, can you hear me?
Yep, we can, go ahead.
Now I, now I can hear you.
Alrighty.
Sorry.
We're all ready to go, it's streaming, we're recording.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, let's welcome everybody to the May 25th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, indivisible. Justice for all. Liberty and justice for all.
Christie, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Beerstead.
Here.
Carol.
Present.
Downing.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odean.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next are the approval minutes from the May 11th meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
First and second on the minute, any questions? Christie, we have first and second on the minutes.
I have a first by Morissette, a second by Beerstead. We'll start the vote with Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Odean.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the approval of the bills with Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move for the approval of the payment of bills in the amount of $616,115.53 subject to the comptroller.
Second.
First and second on the bills, any questions? Christie, we have first and second on the bills.
I have a first by Carroll, a second by Beerstead. We'll start the vote with Ms. Odean. Ms. Odean? We'll go to Mr. Downing, hopefully she'll come back.
Aye.
Morissette. Morissette.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Who is being?
Believe she said aye in the middle of some of that.
Okay, thank you.
I think her and Todd's at the same time. Yep. Okay, you, there you go. Just have her do the old thumbs up from now on.
Aye.
Okay, you got everything, Christie?
I do, we're set for public comment, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to public comments. Any, is there anybody there in the council?
Nope, we're good here.
Good there? Okay, nobody on the phone? No?
Nope.
Okay, okay, yeah, Ms. Miller, I know you had wanted to say something.
I just wanted to say thank you to the River Falls Public School District employees for weathering a very tough year and doing a wonderful job of adapting and educating our children here in River Falls in circumstances beyond anyone's comprehension. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers, support staff, and administrators for all the wonderful work they did this year.
Okay, anybody else? Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downing, add your hand up.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I completed the Board of Review training this year. So our city is in compliance of having at least one board member who has completed the required state training for it this year. There is a video and an exam, and if any other council members also want to do that as well, just go to City Hall and request it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Mr. Morissette?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I have some comments that I'd like to share with the, with the public and the council tonight. Uh, thi- this is around Senior Boys Night Out that happened last week in the city of River Falls. Uh, these are, these are high school seniors at the River Falls High School. Um, and I have to tell you how disappointed I am in the activity that they, that they did. Uh, I've got, I've seen pictures of, of one car in particular that has, um, eggs, flour, oil, rice, baked beans, spray paint, ketchup. Um, there's, it's, it's vandalism is what it is. Um, I've had, I know of families in my own neighborhood who have had this in the past, who have spent between $800 and $1,000 to clean up, have to have somebody come out and, um, uh, high pressure wash their driveway and clean up. Um, the, the car in question that I saw a picture of, uh, was a brand new Jeep that was, has probably been damaged beyond repair. Again, this is vandalism, and this tradition, which started out as an innocent thing of probably toilet papering, has grown over the years into, um, not something we expect out of the youth of our city. Um, I've had discussions with some of the school board members, I've had some discussions with the principal at the high school. I've also had a discussion with our chief of police. And one of the biggest frustrations that we're getting is that, uh, when I talked to the chief this afternoon, he indicated that the parents won't press charges. Um, so my appeal is to the parents and to the school district, um, that if we're gonna continue to allow this to happen in our city, we're gonna continue to get what we're getting. Um, and I don't think anybody is pleased by that. Um, I think, I think this is a, this is a school district issue and a parenting issue. Um, and unfortunately, if the city gets involved, it's gonna be a law enforcement issue that's gonna result in some, some pretty serious charges. Um, I also do get concerned in today, in today's, uh, atmosphere that, that something may escalate with, with a parent, uh, when he catches, uh, kids doing this kind of thing, and, and we could have some real serious situations come up. Um, I know the school district is frustrated, um, I know there are a lot of parents who are frustrated. Um, and I'm asking the parents out there who might see this tonight, uh, to go back to your kids and really stress the fact that this is not something that they should tolerate. Um, I don't believe that kids are brought up this way to do this, and I think that the one-upmanship has gotten way out of hand. Uh, and it's time to stop, and if some would like to see the pictures, I would be happy to share them with you. So, uh, that's the end of my comments, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morissette. Uh, Mr. Plunkett, I believe you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to check to make sure that we had checked the doors at, uh, uh, City Hall. I know normally we've got, uh, a little different today, and I didn't hear that check that I normally do.
Yeah, I went down and there were, we do have visitors in council chambers, so they, they were able to get in the doors.
Yes, the doors have been open since before.
Thanks, guys. Okay. Anybody else for public comments? Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing, so I'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing for the annual liquor license and beer license renewals. Um, hearing in disposition by motion for each licensed class. So first.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Morissette.
Mr. Mayor, would this be an appropriate time for me to, uh, ask the questions of the, of the new applicant, applicants for agency?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, okay, this might be a little clumsy online here, but, um, I'm sorry, Christie, did you have a question?
Sorry, was it, was that Christie?
Did you wanna take a roll call for the new agents first, Mayor?
Yeah, can we do that? There should be four of them, correct?
Yes, for the first one, yes.
That's what I got. Did you want me to ask the agents, or, Christie, do you wanna ask them?
Mayor, did you want me to check to see if they're there?
Yeah, go ahead, Christie, could you please ask?
Sure.
Trying to find something.
The first one is Troy Smith from Holiday Station Store Number Eight.
Go ahead, I get, I gotta get on. Good, okay. Okay, all right, so Mr. Smith is on right now.
I'm sorry, you broke up. Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. If you just wanna hang on, Mr. Smith, um, the second one would be Danielle Hull from the Nutty Squirrel.
Danielle. Mr. Hull.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. The third one is Greg Peters from the Baseball Council.
There you are, good. Hello?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Peters, and the last one is Charles Baronic with Smokey Treats.
Mr. Baronic, are you on?
I am.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Christie, go ahead, Mr. Morissette.
All right, we'll take, we'll take him in the same order, Mr. Smith.
Um, yeah.
Uh, and just as, just as a preamble, I ask the same three questions of every agent who applies for, for the role of agent, uh, on a liquor license, um, in the city. Do you, do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes, absolutely.
Do you possess a responsible bartender's license or, or certificate?
Correct.
Do you understand that if there's an alcohol-related violation in your, in your, uh, state?
Do you understand that if there's an alcohol-related violation in your establishment and you are not there, you're still responsible for the situation?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Hull, are you available?
Yes, I am.
We'll run through the same quick questions. You understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
Do you possess a responsible server's license?
Yes.
And you understand that if an alcohol-related violation occurs in your establishment, you're not there, you're still responsible?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, you were previously an agent, and now you're back. Are you willing to affirm all those three questions that I just asked the other agents?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chuck, you're there. You understand the role of an agent?
Yes, I do.
Do you possess a responsible server's license?
Not yet.
Okay, when do you expect to get that?
As soon as it's available, the online class. By next week.
Okay, all right. And you understand if there's an alcohol-related violation and you're not in the premises, you're still responsible?
Yes, I do.
So I guess my question would be to the clerk or to staff. I would only be in favor of, I will be in favor of transferring the agent status to Mr. Baronic, but only after he's completed that responsible server's license. Is that a condition I should make at the time of motion, or how do we handle that?
Council member, that'd be part of your typical motion, is that they have to meet all of the requirements at the time of issuance of the license, which should include that course being completed.
Okay, so we could make that blanket approval, and that would cover this situation as we usually approve in groups. Is that right, Scott?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Chuck.
Okay, so we're in a public hearing, so is there anybody in the audience that has anything to say about the liquor license renewals? Okay, nobody has anything to say, so we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing. And I'll take a motion on number one first, for grant renewals for the Class A.
Mr. Plunkett.
Yep, I need, you got a comment, or do you want to wait till we make a motion?
No, I have questions for the agents also.
Oh, okay, well, okay, go ahead.
And my question to the agents is, what is your establishment going to do to prevent over-serving of alcohol? What do you consider over-serving of alcohol? And what policies and procedures would your establishment have in place to prevent that?
Whoever wants to go first.
Could he repeat the question? I couldn't really hear him.
I'll interject. Troy Smith here from Holiday. You take the online training course, it will tell you the signs to look for.
Okay. So Dan, or Greg, or Charles?
And then second part of that question, so he's saying that he's deferring to the online course for a definition of over-serving, by my understanding. And I'd like to know what policy and procedures his establishment will have in place to ensure that that happens. And what will happen if that does not happen?
I don't think it really matters what the establishment's policy is. It's the server's responsibility to make sure that the person is not leaving there intoxicated. It teaches you all that in the online course.
Any of the other three new agents want to interject here to answer any of the questions?
Yeah, I can answer.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to go, Mr. Mayor?
That's fine, whoever would like to go next.
Okay, yeah, this is Greg from the River Falls Baseball Council. Our serving time is usually a lot less than your average establishment because of ballgames are usually, you know, two to two and a half hours, something like that. But if we would ever, we have not had that happen yet. But if we did have a case where someone, you know, looked like they came in from another place, and they, you know, they would just refuse, you know, service, and I guess to answer, I think, you know, your third or fourth question, Councilman Plunkett, was that, you know, if there was any issues, we would call the law enforcement, and if they, you know, and have them removed, I guess, if they wouldn't walk away quietly.
Okay.
Smokey Treats, Chuck here. They have limited serving hours here, usually just over supper time with closing eight, nine o'clock. So I'd roll back to the previous gentleman, and it is a very limited time. And then as far as someone that definitely comes into the establishment that's already been over-served, that would be our responsibility to have them leave and not serve them.
Okay. Mr. Hull, Daniel, have you answered anything yet?
No, not yet. I can right now. Yeah, so I think at the Nutty Squirrel, we get, you know, seven days a week from roughly 11:00 a.m. till bar close. And so we get all walks of life coming in and coming out from downtown and where they're coming from. So our processes and procedures looks like the following. If it's a server, either on the patio or inside the restaurant at the bar, being the bartender, if there's anybody that seems that they have been over-served when they come in, it's brought to the bartender's attention because the bartender is the only one that makes the drinks. If there's any concerns from someone who's at the bar who's being belligerent, or who is not being, in a sense, watched too closely from when they came in, it's then brought to a manager's attention. And we have a GM, a senior GM. We have an AGM property. We also have an executive chef and a chef manager. So we have four people of management that are there around the clock, and so it's brought to their attention. If it's late at night, when the managers went home, say at midnight or bar closed, it's understood by the bartenders that we have, based on the responsible beverage courses that they've taken, that they act accordingly. And it's happened in the past when somebody came out from the general public and came to our establishment, and they wouldn't leave, that we've had to call the non-emergency number, and then they would have to come over and then escort those people out of the business. So we have a pretty good team as to how we handle those situations. We've handled them in the past, and we'll have to handle them again going forward. So, yeah, we do a pretty good job doing that.
Sounds like all the problems are from people coming in, not people leaving the park.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're definitely not a stop for everybody to stay there all day and get intoxicated. I think for a lot of people, they're out and about. If it's biking with their motorcycle or going around and driving from place to place, but I think it's a responsibility of all of all the establishments to make sure people are being responsible. But some people can endure more alcohol. Some people can't endure much. So you have to kind of base it on each person's ability, and then their attitudes too, and how they treat the customer, and then those patrons around them. So there's a lot of touch points that a business owner, or a manager, or bartender can really understand that. And we have some very, very well-educated and knowledgeable staff within our property that I entrust to do this. So they take it serious.
Okay, Mr. Plunkett, any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate all the agents present, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
On page 78 of the packet, the applicant failed to answer the question, "Does the applicant owe municipal property taxes, assessments, or other fees?" And this is important because renewal of licenses may be denied pursuant to local ordinance if the license owes municipal taxes and/or other fees. So I believe that's Matthew Burnak. Could he answer that for me right now?
Yeah, I stopped and filled that out yesterday to Jackie.
So you did fill it out?
Yeah, I did it yesterday, probably like, so.
And how did you answer it?
I don't know if fees or anything like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yep. Okay. Move on, and I'll take a motion for grant renewals for Class A beer licenses and Class A cider-only licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of the issuance. In this motion, we're granting a license to Bob and Steve's Store number four on Pausland Road, Bob and Steve's Store number six on North Main Street, and Holiday Station Stores.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the Class A beer and Class A cider-only license contingent upon all licensing requirements being met.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments on this? Christie, we have first and a second on motion one for Class A and Class A cider and Class A beer licenses.
A first by Morissette, a second by Downing. Start the vote with Ms. Miller.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next, motion number two, we grant renewals for the combination Class A liquor and Class A beer licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of the issuance. And this would be for Aldi's, Divine Liquors, Dick's Hometown Liquor, Family Fresh Market, Quick Trip, South Main Strip, South Main Street, Quick Trip, North Main Street, Walgreens, and the Whole Earth Cooperative.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the combination Class A liquor and Class A beer license contingent upon all requirements being met.
Second.
Okay, we got first and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hey, Christie, we have first and a second on motion two for the combination Class A liquor and Class A beer licenses.
A first by Morissette, a second by Carol. We'll start the vote with Mr. Morissette.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Plunkett. Sorry, was that an aye, Mr. Plunkett? Thank you.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next, we'll move on to motion number three, which is for grant renewals for Class B beer licenses, contingent on the licensing requirements that met at the time. And this will be for Kenny Cafe, Luigi's Pizza, River Falls Baseball Council, Smokey Treats BBQ Fusion, and Steve's Pizza.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the Class B beer license contingent that all licensing requirements are met.
Second.
Okay, we've got first and second. Any comments? Yep, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Yeah, I'm actually interested in considering each of these individually. We're getting into the area here where we've got folks that are also serving food in the downtown area. And I'd be interested in looking at the location part of the license on these to allow for some expanded outdoor service with limited hours in front of those locations on Main Street. I think there's a lot of customers that might be interested in that option at some of these establishments if it were available. And I think with our harm reduction with the pandemic, that's a good way to accomplish that.
Is anybody else interested in doing these one at a time?
Well, I think I'd just make a quick comment, Mr. Plunkett, that the license application comes with, as you're probably aware, comes with the definition of what area they want licensed. And right now, I don't know that they can be licensed on something that they don't own. I don't know that they could be licensed on our sidewalks right now because that's not their property. I would agree that that would be a great amenity to have, but I guess I would suggest that that we maybe have that discussion, a bigger-picture discussion, at another time and allow them to amend their license. I don't know if you're amenable to that type of activity, but I think it's a great idea. But again, I think we run into a hurdle because it's not their property. It's ours, so to speak.
Yeah, considering what you just stated, they really couldn't request that in the application. I think it's something that, you know, is appropriate to discuss at this time as we're looking at these licenses and do have the power to grant that. But I'd certainly be amenable to having this discussion at another time if we could be insured of having that. As a council member, I don't know of any way of ensuring that I can get anything brought up on an agenda at this time.
That's up to you guys. I think doing it a little while, that way we'd be able to talk to the different owners and see if they'd even be interested in something like that. I don't know how many are interested in doing something like that, first off.
I would also be interested in hearing, I would also be interested in hearing from business owners downtown whether or not they'd like us to do that. So I think we should do a little research and bring this back.
We can definitely do that. Is the council okay with doing a little research and find out if there's anybody interested in doing this? And then bringing it back on an agenda as soon?
Yeah, I mean, part of, I think, what I'd like to hear is how much of the sidewalk would we be allowing this on? You know, what hours would it be? What would it look like? Would there be barriers involved? I mean, I think those are some of the things that I'd want to hear about. But there's certainly enough examples around the state for us to fall back on to look at those examples. I think it's a conversation worth having.
Mr. Mayor and Council, would you be, so staff has some understanding of what what direction we might be going? Is this something that council wants to exclusively deal with, or is this something that you would want to send to the planning commission?
Well, I think first step would be to see, do we have business owners that are even interested in doing this? And if that's the case, and I think this is probably something that could go to the planning commission and then have the council look at what they recommend. But that's kind of up whatever the council would like. Mr. Downing, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, in the sense that I think it's really difficult to micromanage negotiation as a primary purpose like we're doing right now. And I think it makes a lot more sense to do it later on like you're talking about. Thank you.
Would something like that work, Scott? If Terry could maybe talk to the business owners, see if they'd be interested, you know, the bars and restaurants, see if they'd be interested in doing that. And if some of them are, then we can, you know, staff can look at some examples and see what we can come up with. And if some of them are, then we can, you know, staff can look at some examples and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I think staff can provide some examples of other, other city ordinances. We have some narrow fronted sidewalks, so it's, there'll be some challenges with ADA compliance and on top of the, the premise issue. I think the premise issue can be overcome because I believe other cities have done so, but we'll, we still will have to try to provide you the complexity that I suspect it will, it will be. But I think it's, it's something that can be accomplished if the community desires that you, you can get sidewalk cafe-ish feeling even on the narrow sidewalks, but we can work through that and get, get something back to council, if that's what, if that's what the council's asking us to do.
Okay. Mr. Plunkett, you had your hand up?
Maybe straying into proper notification on open meeting area territory here that I raised this simply as an issue to look at with the conditions of these licenses at the time that we're granting them. And while I appreciate looking at the broader and deeper discussion, maybe that is something that should happen on a noticed agenda to have these discussions. So we're not.
I think, I think that's what Mr. Simpson is asking. Is that what we?
Yeah, I think you've got a little more rope to go with because of the, you know, the public hearing nature of the premise descriptions on the city council meeting, but I generally agree that if we start to add some complexity and then it starts to look like you're giving us direction and staff, then we probably should bring that back as a separate, separate topic, which we can do. But I, I do want to understand if, and I think it's appropriate for the council to, to do this even in kind of on a straw poll basis. Is this something, Mayor and council, you want to come back to you, or would you like it to go somewhere else first?
I think give it to the planning commission first and then see what they think, and then we can send a recommendation on to the council.
I would agree with the mayor. I think.
That's what I think.
I would agree with the mayor. I think, I think we first pull, pull the businesses. There might be some businesses that say, listen, my storefront, you know, my, my frontage is only room for two, two-person tables. The, the, the staff requirement and the monitoring requirement to comply with liquor monitoring may not be worth it to them. How many people are interested in it, you know, so forth. And then based on that feedback, the staff can then, can then craft something and take it to plan commission. And plan commission can do the, can do the legwork that we would expect them to and then provide the council with some direction. So that, that'd be my thought, but I hear whatever else has to say.
Okay, so staff, what I'm hearing is staff will look at the legal, logistical. We'll get a law enforcement opinion for what they, you know, as far as, so I guess that'd be enforcement, so legal, practical enforcement. And, and there's probably a list of a few other things, but just, that's basically what we'll try to get to is can, what's the legal pathway? What's a practical pathway forward, you know, actually with the physical space we have and the interest of the business owners? And then from an enforcement standpoint, how would we, who would control the premise and how would law enforcement be involved in that and those kind of things? And we'll send it to the, we talked that through at the planning commission.
Good. Mr. Downing, you had your hand up?
I think Mr. Simpson touched a bit on what I was gonna say, but it will come in front of our departments first, right? Like our C, our C corp, our executive team, the different departments for police and whatnot.
Yeah, certainly, certainly that'll be part of the review is to get kind of some brainstorm of issues we're not thinking of.
It would be, thank you, Scott. And I think it'd be a mistake if we skip that or the plan commission. I think a longer process fixes the wrinkles in this, so. Thank you.
Okay, so you're okay with that, Scott?
Yeah, I think that's sufficient direction for me.
Okay. Any other questions on, we, we were on granting renewals for Class B beer licenses?
Christie, do you have a mo, do you have a motion number three yet, or was there a question?
No, I got, I got a motion, I got a mo, I got a motion and a second, and then we're having questions or discussion.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
But I don't think I got a second on that, so we can consider that as a, yeah, a withdrawn there.
Okay. Anything else on this? Hey, Christie, I got a first and a second on renewal for Class B beer licenses.
I have a first by Morissette, a second by Odine. We'll start the vote with Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Plunkett.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Morissette.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Odine.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, move on to grant renewals for the combination Class B liquor and Class B beer licenses, contingent on all licensing requirements being met at the time of the issuance. And this would include the American Legion Post 121, Rose Sports Bar and Grill, Emma's Bar, Falls Theater, Johnny's Bar, Junior's Restaurant and Tap House, Swinging Bridge Brewery, Lazy River Bar and Grill, Main Streeter Bar and Grill, Mariachi Loco, Maverick's Corner Saloon, Mel's Midtowner, Nutty Squirrel, River Falls Golf Club, River Falls Moose Lodge, Shooter's Pub, St. Croix Lanes, and Westwind Supper Club.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the combination Class B liquor and Class B beer licenses contingent that all licensing requirements met at the time of issuance.
Second.
Okay, first and second, any questions or comments on this one? Okay, Christie, we got a first and a second on renewals for combination Class B liquor and Class B beer licenses.
I have a first by Morissette, a second by Beerstead. We'll start the vote with Mr. Beerstead.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Plunkett.
Hi.
Odine.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Carol.
Hi.
Morissette.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next, move on to renewal of the Class C wine licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. And this would include Kenny Cafe, River Falls Baseball Council, Smokey Treats Barbecue Fusion, and Steve's Pizza.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to grant renewal of the Class C wine licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Christie, we got a first and a second on renewal of the Class C wine licenses.
I have a first by Downing, a second by Carol. Start the vote with Mr. Plunkett.
Hi.
Odine.
Hi.
Carol.
Hi.
Miller. Morissette.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, now I'll close the council hearing and reopen the public hearing for request for combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license. This would be for River Falls Management LLC doing business as Bold Burger at 106 North Main Street. Does anybody have any comments on this in the audience? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, we'll make sure that Mr. Castro is here.
Yeah, is he here?
Don, can you check and see if he's on?
Mr. Wilks. Yes, I'm here. I'm not witness to Castro. He's in the office, but they said they did call in and he should be on.
Just give us one moment, Mr. Mayor. We'll try to get him connected here.
Yep, that's fine.
If it's not with, with Paul, then that's all we know.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we have Mr. Castro.
Okay. So would the council like to hold, hold table this till the next, till we get him at the next meeting?
Now, hold on. Go ahead, Jackie.
Hi, I actually just talked to Alejandro on the phone. He is on with Mr. Wilks. Is that correct, Alejandro? Oh, under Brian Sandy.
Yeah, I'm on. I'm just at a different location. I apologize.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
So he should be on with Brian Sandy, if there's a way to pull in Brian Sandy.
Oh, we are, you, you, city council?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
This is Alejandro Castro.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Castro.
No problem. Thank you.
And I think Mr. Morissette asked some questions for you.
Sure.
Mr. Ca, Mr. Castro, you're, you're currently the agent for Castro Corp., correct?
That is correct.
I've already asked you the three questions when you became that agent. Are you, you're willing to reaffirm the positive answer to those three questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need to hear.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Castro. Okay, so I will take.
Mr. Plunkett had some questions also.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Castro, I've got the, the same questions I did for you as I had for the other establishments. What do you consider to be over-serving of alcohol? And what is your establishment going to do to make sure that that's not happening there? Thank you.
Well, I, I believe we're gonna run the same. We're gonna be training our servers. And, and then when late night, like in the dance floor and everything, we're gonna have our own bouncers there checking for IDs before they get into it, into the place. So that's a way we're gonna try to control everything and get the bar, make sure the bartenders know what they doing and everything.
Was that, was, was there something else, Mr. Plunkett? No? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Castro.
Yep.
No problem.
Go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Question for Mr. Castro, um, do you have any parts of your establishment that would require a bartender or additional staff that would be like outside or in a place that you feel would serve for safety reasons to have another bartender at?
Actually, during the day, from Monday, from Sunday to Wednesday, we're gonna have the restaurant and everything. We're gonna have behind the bar, we're gonna have our bartenders and then the servers also. So the server has to send the order to the bartenders. So the, but the servers should be checking IDs and everything during the, the restaurant hours. And when it comes to the dance floor, the entrance is gonna be a totally different entrance. You just have to go directly to the dance floor. So at that time, when we open the dance floor, we're gonna have the bouncers in the entrance, making sure that everyone is over twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Castro? Okay, thank you, Mr. Castro.
No problem.
Okay, now, now I can't remember if I had a motion on this yet or not.
You did not, Mayor.
Didn't, okay. So I'll take a motion for request for a combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license for River Falls Management LLC doing business as Bold Burger.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, first and second on this. Do we have any other comments or questions? Christie, I have first and a second on request for combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license for River Falls Management uh, doing business as Bold Burger.
So first by Morissette, a second by Beerstead. We'll start the vote with Ms. Odine.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Morissette.
Hi.
Miller. Carol.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Plunkett.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we, we made it through liquor licenses. So now I'll move on to the consent agenda. First one is acknowledging the following minutes. The Park and Recreation Advisory Board from 421, the Planning Commission from 47, the River Falls Housing Authority from 414, the Bid Board from 413, the Historic Preservation Commission from 414, and the Library Board from 412. And the other one is a resolution supporting the American Legion Post 121 for, for request for city assistance for 2021 events. I'll take a motion on this. Or I'm sorry, does anybody want to pull anything first? Otherwise, I'll take a motion on these two things.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items four A through F and five.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Is there any other questions or comments? Christie, we got a first and a second on the consent agenda.
I have a first by Odine, a second by Carol. Start the vote with Ms. Miller. Plunkett.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Morissette.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Odine.
Hi.
Carol.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, the ordinance 2021 dash zero four, repealing and replacing section seventeen point one oh four, point oh four oh of the municipal code relating to special use permits. And this is the first reading. The second reading will be at our next meeting on June, or I'm sorry, the second reading and disposition will be on June eighth. Are there any questions from the council on this? Mr. Downing?
So my question is for city administrator Scott Simpson. Is this required by the state of Wisconsin? Is that part of why we're moving this direction? And I have a couple other questions after that.
Yeah, the primary reason for review of this is, is some changes in state law. And so we're trying to maintain some local authority on these. In the absence of us making changes to our current ordinance, then we would, we would have lesser, some lesser ability to do that. It does change, as noted in the ordinance, it does change kind of where the approval occurs and the review. And I think, I believe Ms. Peterson and/or Ms. Howard are available too for questions, but.
Now, my next question is, is our C corp, our city department heads and our mayor, are they involved in that before it hits the plan commission at all? To do site location checks or anything with items that we've brought up as individual council members before to ensure that there's adequate provisions within those zones to meet certain standards?
I think what you're referring to is kind of the executive team of the city, so I would say that in a matter like this, that it would typically be discussed with the executive team or a subset of the executive team. There isn't a formal review that kind of sits out there on top of the, the plan commission, but certainly Community Development Director Peterson may talk to other members of the exec team, certainly myself, about different SUPs that come along that we may think are out of the ordinary or something that, that needs a little more discussion. But ultimately, you know, these are all policy decisions of would be the, the plan commission.
And I have one last question. Is there any required training and education for the plan commission for the members that are appointed to it? We're gonna be part of the zoning, also part of the zoning group as well. Or is there classes offered to them for that particular subject matter from the city?
So there isn't any required training statutorily that I'm aware of, unless Ms. Peterson is, but that's part of the responsibility of, of staff. um, that's part of the responsibility of, of staff, obviously, is to try to offer them resources, um, for training. So that, things like the Plan Commission Magazine, um, or other articles, other training sessions, workshops that we, that we bring up. But I'm, I'm not aware of a, any requirement, um, for these volunteer board members.
Yes. Sorry, but I have one more point. Um, I noticed that in the, in the mi-, in the notes, minutes, that there was a discussion about, you know, our mayor and, uh, former council member Watson had suggested it will increase, um, community engagement. And that's always a good thing. Is our city's comprehensive plan, um, with that update, will that be an opportunity to help these, um, planning commission and the zoning, uh, board as well to improve the community engagement for both of them? Because I, there is an aspect that we provide as a council as well to compare to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the plan commission operates as both a regulatory body and also as a focus group. And so, once the community determines its comp plan direction through the big, kind of what I would consider the big engagement, then the plan commission and you as council members use, you know, what I would consider little or, or one-to-one or personal engagement to kind of see if everything is on track. So, and engagement, communications engagement, um, is or transparency and engagement, those are topics that are covered in a lot of the, um, training or, um, conference sessions and things that staff go to. And then there's training through UW Extension and other areas for individual plan commissions who wish to, 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 uh, to look into that.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Okay, anybody else have any questions on this? Okay, move on to resolution approving certified survey map for Dawes Place, and I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the, uh, resolution for a certified survey map creating lot one, the development site for Dawes Place Phase One.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any questions or comments on this one?
I do have questions.
Yep, Mr. Beerstead.
Um, and maybe I'm thinking of the wrong, uh, property here, but it seems that when we first talked about this, there was, uh, discussion of this property being owner occupied. And now I think everything is turned rental, which, you know, that's fine, but question is, uh, to staff, I mean, could this be owner occupied? Could it still be, uh, condoed or whatever term we want to use if, if they, uh, decided to go that way? I'm not sure if the structure's changed or the site plan changed at all, but I thought we were doing some owner occupied here.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Community Development Director Peterson might be able to answer that question because she's been through the discussions with the developers, um, on the lot creation.
Yeah, so you're correct. This is planned to be rental at this point. Um, but I do believe that if the developer wanted to in the future, they would be able to condo this out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, I'll take a motion, or I'm sorry, Christie, we have a first and a second on a resolution, resolution approving certified survey map for Dawes Place.
Yes, I have a first by Morissette, a second by Beerstead. Start the vote with Mr. Morissette.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the, the council report with Ms. Odine.
I'll do my best. One moment.
Yep.
Sorry. But I, I apologize, everybody. My, um, connection is particularly bad today.
It's okay.
Okay. Here's the comptroller's report for April 2021. General fund revenues through the end of April were $4,702,663, or 41% of total budgeted revenues for 2021. Revenues in April included $127,492 from the School Recourse Officers Program and $163,040 in transportation aids and annual lottery credits from the state of Wisconsin. Expenditures for the same period were $3,3160, or 26% of total budgeted expenses. And expenditures for the period included $22,928 in bulk road salt. Net revenues over expenditures as of April were $1,699,504.
Thank you, Ms. Odine. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Christie, first and a second on adjournments.
A first by Beerstead, a second by Morissette. Start the vote with Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there tonight. Thanks, all the staff members for the extra help tonight. We appreciate it on the liquor license stuff. Thanks, Jaden. Thanks, John. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Christie.
Thank you. Thanks for getting on early.